Wow.
Bring it over.
Oh, yeah.
Don't look up.
I don't believe it.
You can't really talk to them.
Okay.
One of the stats.
Yeah.
He didn't.
I know.
Anthony. You hope that's not an ominous sign, I don't think.
You know, I guess I do need.
They probably misbehave, that's probably what it is.
Someone who graduated in seventy two. Sorry, I'm afraid to say.
Want to begin from kicking out, right?
Every day?
It was fun.
It was fun. It was fifteen years. Fifteen was fast. It was good.
Yeah.
I know.
They're all.
Missing anyone.
I think, I don't think that's gonna be human dialing yet. He's, he's up in the Boundary Water, somewhere up in the Southern Bay or something. Yeah.
Yeah. Why is actually R T?
And he didn't have any.
Okay, my every, every sever, sever, I'm everybody in. There is a.
Wait, so Eric Severide and what?
He brought about, he, about time he was a kid. If you can, Minneapolis. So the two, the Red Mill, and you can do it all the way up to the, uh, that I was.
And he went north, he didn't go south for Minnesota, down to Mississippi.
Yeah, and you, no, he didn't even, but he had to go south to get, you know, the Red Mill. And then he went north and then he was. And so when I heard, when Anna and I heard Ed, oh, I was telling him about the, oh, you're gonna, you're gonna write, uh, what it looks like there, several ideas. And, uh, so I go.
They, I.
I don't know. First time.
Oh, he's not one to see.
Well, I.
I don't know.
He was an East Captain, was it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was here.
That was respect.
Yeah, well, he had that in his voice too. And that respectable dog.
Perfect. I don't think I see it. That's. That was. Yeah. Oh, wow. Yeah. That's all. You got the ratings. They would definitely be really walking.
I didn't like it. Stay with her. She's back up.
It's, uh. Maybe like you said. Four. Bring it over. There. Your looks.
Other than that, it's weird.
Yeah. That doesn't stay a nice world.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Walk.
I don't think I record. Oh, yeah. Chat turned on.
I'm up there inside on the. Yeah. Personally. Well, as well. As a double. That's what I'm. Why? Uh, that is. Yeah. I was just. Yeah. Uh. I'm going to. Did it seem to be a sore. No, it's not. If I don't see some. No, it's not. So I. You know. Or if. I need to know. I'm sure. So. Hi. Welcome. Go. I'm. Can you mention? Hello, sir. Hi, how are you? Please come on in. I don't feel like. We're here.
Bring the walkout. Look at that.
Let's get it.
So welcome to. Welcome. Leaving tomorrow.
Oh, my. Really? The latest, the one they don't want. But I don't want to say that. Who better money than the jury? Anyone?
Do you hear me? John?
Yeah.
I know.
For.
That is.
I'm missing. I, I don't see. You're winning. You're such. Just the. My. Steel. Much less. And.
It's the first one of months.
I knew it's gonna be.
It's the first one of months of valve stably here.
Yeah. Right. Cool. All right.
Oh, that was by. No. Oh, there we go.
Done with done. So now I disappear. I know. This is what Joe was there.
Yeah. Until we get.
Okay, seven thirty, let's start the meeting. I have work. With the region.
Everybody. Who is. I have a. They call it. As. Why? It's all liberty. I'll just.
Like hopefully. Mr. Dattley.
Here.
Brainerd.
Present.
Mr. Harney. Mr. Thor.
Here.
Mr. Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Nimitz. Okay, we've got. And we're here, Joe.
No.
Drop, right? Like one minute until. Okay. All right. We do have. One trustee that was on Zoom. Wait a second for him to reappear. In the meantime, the gubernatorial proclamation allowing remote access. Is in effect until, I believe, the nineteenth of October. So once again, those that are not. And, uh. The board wishing to attend remotely may do so. Uh, we've got one trying to log in at the moment. In the meantime, in addition to those of us here in the building, attending remotely is village engineer Jess Steele, Public Works. Kyle Killinger and Chief of Police, our Chief Parma are with us remote. And trustee Nemic is. Joined us remotely, awesome. Joe, can you hear us? Hello, Joe.
Present.
It's cold up north.
There, there it is.
Joe. Can you hear us?
No.
Joe.
Yes.
There.
Yeah, you can hear him.
Yes, I can.
Okay. We can hear you. Joe, you are present for the meeting.
Yes, I'm here. Been here.
Thanks for the roll call. Okay. Now, roll call is finished. We can continue, however, because we do have someone remote this evening, all votes will be by roll call. Okay. Next item is the minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes of September nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
So move the atly.
Second, Thor.
Moved by the atly, seconded by Thorne. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Brainerd.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes and no negative votes in motion, so passes, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, the next item is the president's report. Uh, I would like to thank, uh, Rich Engley with the Service Club for his assistance, uh, yesterday in the move of the mayor. Uh, project that we had. Uh, it ended up being a multi-community event. We had representatives from Belgium and West Dundee along with the representative from Sleepy Hollow. That completed the, uh, tour of Sleepy Hollow yesterday. So I just wanted to thank everybody that showed up and participated. It was a fun event. The one recommendation though is that we move it to a warmer time of the year. Well. But other than that, the coffee and the power rings were appreciated. And we will make plans maybe next spring when the weather is warm for an encore of. Performance. Okay. The next item I got on the agenda is the appointment to the finance committee. And I've got one recommendation that I would like a, uh, motion to, uh, approve. An appointment to the finance committee, and that is, uh, Malcolm Morris. I would appreciate a motion to approve his appointment to the finance committee. His resume is included in the packet. If any questions concerning, um, Mr. Morris's capabilities to, uh, help us out.
So approve the. I'll approve the motion to, uh. Install him on the finance committee.
Second.
Moved by Hoffman, seconded by Thorne to approve the appointment of Malcolm Morris to the finance committee. Are any further comments, questions, or discussion?
How long has he been a resident in Sleepy Hollow?
Uh, about thirty-five, thirty-six years.
When was he on the board?
Four years. He was also on the police commission board for two years, uh, prior to that.
Yeah. Yeah. Oh, thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? And roll call, please. Mr. Brainerd.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes and no negative votes, the appointment is self confirmed, thank you, gentlemen. The next appointment I've got, Mr. Hoffman is asked that we appoint Jenny McGuire to the finance committee.
I made a motion, we appoint Jennifer McGuire to the finance committee. Second, the atly.
Moved by Graham, seconded by the atly to appoint Jenny McGuire to the finance committee. Once again, her letter of intent and the resume was included in the packet for your review. Any comments, questions, or discussion?
Well, we now have four. Residents on the finance committee compared to two before and one prior to that. So with Eugene, myself, and the four, I think we can. Move forward and. We also have a tentative meeting, which it looks like it may be pushed back again, uh, next. It was gonna be next, scheduled for next Thursday, but it will be Wednesday because of Catherine's conflict. But, uh, based on what Eugene and I saw today, we don't know if we'll have the audit finalized by then. So I'll probably push it back, what, to the end of October? Eugene?
Probably.
Possibly. Yeah, so more to come. I'll just put a couple of P B Ds in there and I'll plug in a couple of dates.
All right. Back to the, uh, question on the floor.
What was that?
The appointment?
Question, Ben.
Yes.
To go ahead.
There's no vote on the last.
There's no vote on the last motion yet.
Okay.
You were taking the discussion away.
Okay, so I moved a point.
Jennifer McGuire. Motion. I get my. Then I second. I was asking for comments and what. You went off on the. Finance.
Well, we've looked for help for a long time.
Their rights of business.
I'll look it up. No further comments, questions, or discussion. Roll call, please. Mr. Brainerd.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Abstain.
Four affirmative and one abstention, the motion so passes. Gentlemen. Okay, that is it for the president's report, court's report? Uh, the clerk has one more of a question than, than a report. What was your time going up over at this big event?
One minute and forty-two seconds. That was into a headwind.
Why so slow? Oh, I'm sorry. I only got one question.
I had it in a fixed gear.
Okay. I have no, I have no important or, nor questions. I probably get in trouble for that one anyway. Okay. Thank you, clerk. Planning and zoning. No reports. Thank you, Mr. Dattley. Attorney's report.
Mr. President, tonight before you are, uh, propose rules of procedure when this board acts as the Board of Appeals, uh, for the Building Department. And as you know, later in the evening, there is an appeal to be considered this evening, so, uh. In order that everyone will, uh, understand the, uh, process and the roadmap through that type of hearing. Uh, you have before you propose rules, uh, don't should be approved by a motion of.
We have a motion to approve the procedures for the Board of Appeals.
I moved that we improve the procedures for the Sleepy Hollow Philly Code Order of Appeals. As per the document that was drafted by the judge attorney.
Second.
Moved by Brown, seconded by Thorne to approve the rules of procedure for the Board of Appeals. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? There being none, roll call, please. Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Brainerd.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes and no negative votes in motion, so passes. Gentlemen. Brangles?
No.
Okay. Mr. Chister. Uh, engineers report, Mr. Steele.
Uh, just to give you an update on the street program, uh, we have a pre-construction meeting on Wednesday. Uh, finally getting it, uh, started up here after a two-month delay. Uh, who would have known about a strike, so, uh, positive progress.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Got a question for you, Mr. Steele?
Yeah.
Uh. Oh, no, that was, uh, well, well, it was a straight, I, maybe I should be asking this, um, later, but, uh, I've had some questions on regarding some of the patchwork that's gonna be done, but that would be.
Yeah.
That's, that's part of the.
Okay. Uh, like the culvert at Acorn and Katrina. Last week, I, I was grabbed by about half a dozen residents over the last two weeks, wondering when that's gonna be, uh, repaired. Because it's now going into like a ditch or whatever, so they're just asking when they'll do the actual blacktop there.
Yeah, that's actually include, uh, basically wherever you see any open areas, uh, from water main breaks, uh, just basically repairs from pulverics. Is, we're planning on including that in with the street program, so, uh, Wednesday, I should actually know a start date that they'll be actually able to start with that, so.
I told them probably sometime at the beginning of October, so if they ask me again, tell them sometime in October.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Jeff. Question. Uh, Sam. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Um. Can they finish everything before the end of October?
Yeah, is basically is, it should only take them about a week and a half, uh, total, and at least as far as the paving is concerned. And then after that, they'll be putting on the aggregate shoulders along the side, which is where they've paved.
Okay, because that's for Joy Lane, right?
Um, it is all the way Joy Lane, uh, also Willow, and then, uh, is it Fawn Court, the one that's off of, uh, Joy? And then, um. The end of Van Tassel, is it Van Tassel Court or is that Oberon Court? That court that's off of Van Tassel.
Oberon Court.
Yeah, Oberon Court, yeah.
Thank you.
Hey Jeff, quick question?
Yep.
Brief summary on how the water main project is coming along?
Uh, basically is, I have the plans probably about eighty-five percent complete. Um, I was gonna actually talk to everybody at least as far as the water main, Kyle and you, just so I can, uh, sit down, go over everything. Uh, see if there's any more areas, uh, also get Eugene involved as far as, you know, budget wise and all that, so.
Let's plan a meeting for next week sometime. I'll send out an email tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay, any other questions? No. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, Director of Finance, Mr. Nimitz.
Request a motion for the warrants in the amount of eighty-one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars and five cents.
So.
Second, the atly.
Moved by Thorne, seconded by the atly to approve the warrants of October third, two thousand twenty-two in the amount of eighty-one thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars and five cents. Any comments, questions, additions, volutions? I got a quick question, Kyle. Uh, we have sewer situation on Hillcrest. Fifty-seven hundred bucks.
Uh, was that with, uh, Water Services?
Yes.
Yeah, we had to dig up a tank and replumb. Replumb the, the, inside the tank, all the original tanks, the, there's a slide rail where the pump slides in, and those are starting to fail. So sewage water comes back into the tank and it doesn't leave, so we have to dig up around the tank. And then connect it to the line that goes out to the sewer main.
Was that a residence issue?
Yes.
That's.
No, we.
I, I had that one in for the fifty-eight hundred. That was gonna be one of my questions at finance, so I guess the question is, why are we paying for it?
We are responsible for everything in the sewer line from the house to the street.
From the house to the street?
Yeah, so that, so each house that's on sewer has an electric panel box. The homeowner is responsible for the electric to the panel box. We are responsible for the electric from the panel box to the tank. And then anything in the tank to the street, we are responsible for.
Let me ask you a question. Other municipalities, isn't it?
It's been, the, the way that thing was set up in nineteen eighty-two.
Things can change.
Things can change, but, uh.
I mean, I, I, I bring this up all the time, and, and I mean, I get a little frustrated when I keep seeing these expenses. And we're saying, no, the village will absorb it. No, I'm sorry, the village can't absorb all.
That is, we absorb and charge.
Yeah, I know, but let's look at a change then, if that's the case, because other municipalities that I've lived in, you were responsible to the street. Out to the street, and then the.
This is a little bit of a different situation. We demanded that these people go onto the sewer. They had no choice.
That was forty years ago.
I know. We had to get them onto the thing, and that was part of the whole thing. It was that we would take from the electric panel to the tank, tank to the street. So we're responsible for the tank, the pumps. Historically, the pumps have been the issue, but evidently Kyle's saying, well, now we're gonna see some, uh, issues with the tanks and the rails with them.
Oh, I'd like to, I, I, if you're not gonna let that lie, I'm gonna bring that up.
Then.
Okay.
We can take a look at it.
All right.
That's where we are till then. Okay, no further comments, questions, or discussion on the warrants. Roll call, please. Mr. Brainerd.
Aye.
Mr. Dattley.
Aye.
Mr. Thor.
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman.
Aye.
Mr. Nimitz.
Aye.
Five affirmative votes and no negative votes in motion, so passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Um. Just to point a reference for, uh, Jeff, that, uh, last payment for rebuild Illinois came in.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's it.
All right, thank you, Eugene. Uh. Comments from the public? Do you have anybody sign in on the, uh, comment list? Mr. English.
I, uh, just wanted to bring something to the board's attention that maybe you're aware of, maybe you're not, and it's a concern I have with Crane Drive. Particularly at the top of the largest of the hills on that street. It's on, on the crest of the hill, there's a curve, slight curve and a dip before you go up the next hill. And there's always, not always, but there's. Oftentimes. Lawn maintenance care, people parking their truck on the shoulder, putting out cones, protect their employees because the cars that come by. Uh, when that tree fell down across Crane this summer. When the tree service came out, they had to trip around one side of the street and the pickup truck with the crew on the other side, and they had cones out. And then you got the, uh, V P S trucks, the Amazon trucks. It's really hard to see on a good time around that crest of the hill, and when people park on the shoulder, it makes it really dangerous. And I don't know if the village can put no parking signs up or no parking on this side of the street or something, but it is dangerous. And I've walked my dog that way a few times, and there's been times where we had to jump to the side because people come in one way or the other relatively fast. And there's no place to go, so that, I just wanted to see if there's anything the village can do.
You brought to our attention Chief Parma's attendance this evening. Uh. We'll take a look at it and see what we can do. Ms. McMahon?
Oh, I didn't have anything to say. I thought he was just calling up to sign in.
Okay, thank you. Uh, okay, trustee reports, roads and parks, Mr. Harney is not with us this evening and did not leave a report. And is it a place where there's no road and parks? No roads or parks. And Aurora Horealis interferes with wifi. So they say. Oh, what a good. Okay, finance. Mr. Hoffman.
We bought the one up, which I had that on there for. Uh, to ask, and then also the septic pump outs that they did this month. Were they, uh, Hillcrest and some others that was on the, uh, the list of expenses, uh, are they residents or?
Again, the, the, the tag, if the pump goes and their tank fills, we.
And this is all part of what we just discussed.
The situation is, is that Kyle can't work in the tank if it's filled.
No, no, I understand that, but I'm looking at it from an expense perspective that, you know, this should flip around and flip back to the resident, not to. And I know everybody's gonna have their own whatever, but, you know, when I came on the finance committee and said I wasn't gonna, you know, I mean, or when I took over, I wasn't gonna let things lie. And if I see stuff, I'll mention it, and I'm beginning to see more and more of this, and I think it needs to be challenged. If it was back in nineteen eighty-two, that's forty years later, you know, let's take a look at changing some of this. I mean, there's a lot of things going on too. In a village also, I mean, there's some stuff that Barb's gonna bring up in a little bit, which I won't talk about now, but, uh. I think I've mentioned before that it looks like the. A lot of the. A lot of the code. A lot of the code uh components, code enforcement's kind of going by the wayside. I mean, if you take a look over an Acorn Drive, you take a look at Surrey, you'll find two, three, four boats in driveways right now. You'll see one that's probably a thirty footer that couldn't even fit in a storage unit, but it's been parked there all summer. Uh, that's on on uh. Acorn. And you'll find a number of others and we have a code enforcement officer and I know he's supposed to be doing it like what, three hours a week? Two and a half, three hours a week? I'd like a return on that investment.
It's fifteen thousand a year.
Okay, but I mean, we're looking at, we're 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 incurring costs. You know, from residents, which something that was set up forty years ago. And I can understand that, but nobody's ever challenged it before. And I think now's the time to challenge it. But at the same time, you know, people are looking to change other kinds of codes and all that in the village. And as we get into it tonight, you'll see that there's something that relates to the one that I'm going to bring up later on about a pool. Uh. But. I mean, I think we need to look at the code enforcement because as you go through the village, doesn't matter if you're here or over the other side. You know, you just see a lot of things parked in driveways now. So we get into the point where we're just ignoring it and just let it go. Are we at that? If that's the case, then tell everybody. But if not, then we've got codes that prohibit that. Then let's enforce them.
That's all done by the code enforcer.
I understand that.
So Chief, how how many hours is is Mr. Fleck? Running uh on an average?
Um, right now, he's he's still right around eight to ten hours a week, probably uh maybe just to tick over that. Um, but I I know, I think we might want to talk to 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 code enforcement Officer Fleck because. We're gonna understand there was an agreement made. With how he was going to go about his duties. Um, when he took over that position. So we might want to save this conversation for a uh more of a meeting with Officer Fleck. That would be my suggestion. Chief, I was in last week and talked about that with uh some people here. So I agree with that, but I'd like to get it done like maybe. In the next week or two, if possible. I'd rather get it sooner rather than later.
It it it's somewhat interesting. If I'm the building and zoning trustee, this is the first I've ever heard of any conversations with. Mr. Fleck last week. Please bring me on board to have some input.
I didn't talk to him. I didn't talk to him.
Talked with somebody in the village.
Who was saying? Who told me who it was?
Yeah, just told you who what was.
Who the zoning person was.
Yeah, well, and who's that? Jeff Fleck?
Jeff Fleck.
Yeah, well, Anthony Prano is the building and zoning trustee.
Okay, you'll be brought into it, Anthony, not a problem.
I've had conversations with this in the past. And one of the things that he does, and that's why. The eight to ten hours a week is what. He's he's uh. That's his, that's his hours that he uses. A lot of what he does is when residents call on residents. And I've had this conversation. With the previous chief and I uh did not have it with our current chief. At the time, because I think that there are things that a code enforcer can see. With his own eyes, as I can see with my own eyes, as I walk with my wife or the dog or whatever. And there's there needs to be a a re. Uh, some other consideration to determine what is his real role. So I welcome any times. Uh, an opportunity. As you know, I do work part-time, but I will make sure I try to be available for any meeting with the chief. If you'd like me to set it up with Mr. Fleck. We can set something up and get a tentative date the next, you know, tonight.
I'd say set it up, garden, set it up, but do it in the next two weeks so we can get some peep behind this. November first is coming and that's the deadline for a lot of stuff to be off the off the driveways. I mean, you're only allowed twenty-four, forty-eight, seventy-two hours, whatever. From what I've read in the codes, but I mean. I'm looking at November the first. I've mentioned that before in some past meetings that I think we better. Take a, you know, take a stance at that point and we either say. This is not the code. Or if we decide just to ignore it, then change the code and let them do whatever they want. That's the way I look at it. And uh, let's let's go from there. But you know, that and some others, you know, as I look at these expenses in the village and I know we're paying somebody for code enforcement. And if it's eight hours a week, then I'm sure he does a great job, but I just want to see accountability.
President Pickett?
Yes, Joe.
Just for clarification, I believe when Chief Lannan had hired him. That what he had told us that the direction he was given to keep the number of hours down is he was. Not going to go around looking for. Issues that the only issues he was quoted issues we're gonna take are ones that were reported to him. So. Unless it's changed, he was given the direction not to go around the village and look for code violations.
Who would have given them that direction to go?
Board. Chief, Chief Lannan, Chief Lannan, Chief Lannan had hired him at the time.
Well, that was part of the agreement that we brought to the board and the board agreed with.
And he also, just for some other clarification, he also gets feedback from some of our officers as our officers are driving around on patrol. If they see something, they'll kind of feed some information to Officer Fleck as well. Um, but uh trustee Nemec is is correct. That's the way I understand the agreement as well. Um, and in addition, I think everybody needs to understand too, that a certain percentage of. His time is also spent in court. So when these these violations are written and they come to court, he's the one that goes to court. Um, and that'll occupy, you know, an hour or two of his time every other week or 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 so too. So that has to go into the mix too.
Part of the history, George, you gotta remember. Our budget. Is very small.
And I'm looking at our budget.
You're looking at the budget and you know what we can get done for fifteen thousand dollars of code enforcement? Next to nothing. Seriously. Next to nothing. We ask for. Compliance. We don't look to take people to court. That's not what we really.
No, and I'm not looking for that need.
To the point though, where the residents are ignoring us and they don't want the compliance, so we're gonna have to take them to court. But I mean, that's expensive. And you're gonna have to pay attention to what we spend, not just for code enforcement, but what that entitles on the backside.
Okay, so in the backside.
Of not only the uh code enforcer, but the residents and our village attorney.
Do we recoup the court costs?
Uh, sometimes no. Most likely, I'd say no. While we can. Charge somebody as much as seven hundred and fifty dollars a day per violation. No court in the twenty-two years I've been sitting here has ever awarded that.
And I'm not looking at the seven hundred or escalating the cost.
I'm not either.
If it's a hundred dollar fine, hundred dollar fine and 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 I don't like.
A hundred dollar fine, it's gonna cost us. Two to three hours of Mr. Flex time to go out, write it up, review it, go back, check on it, review it, go back, check on it. Then we find out that they're not going to do it. So now we've got to bring them. Into the court situation. Now all of a sudden, all of a sudden, you've gone from a two or three hour operation. To an eight to a ten hour.
And I told you where I had two lots. Not far from here. Uh, they were absolutely adamant. I mean, if that grass was over seven inches. I think I told you before, they had a cone they put in the middle of the grass. They take a photograph of it, sent you a fine. Sent you a fine, so a hundred and fifty dollars first time, second time, three hundred. Third time, if you didn't pay it, lean against your house automatically.
Well, how much time did you have between? You had to get a notice first. You don't get penalized the first day. There's due process. We notify you, your grass is too tall. We give you seven days to cut it.
Right.
That means I gotta come back or they've got to come back in seven days to see if they can cut it.
Well, they did.
Didn't do it, then we notify you a second time.
If your grass was over that amount, you got hit with the fine. I got hit with a hundred and fifty dollars the first time.
We don't do that.
And but but that's a local municipality too.
Tell you what, what we need to do is put this down as new business.
All right. For the next. Yeah, because I I don't want to tie in, but I definitely want to get to the bottom of it.
Evening, what we want to do as a village.
All right.
We're looking at what the board has done in fact. Uh, if you're looking to change those procedures, then let's make them an agenda item. We'll talk about it.
All right, I'll get it on the agenda. Okay, that's it.
Okay, thank you, George. We'll wait for the uh determination of the meeting you said.
Yes, for the finance. Well, we don't know yet. We we don't have the audit pack yet.
Okay, so it's not going to be the twelfth?
Well, from what she said today, what's what's it look like?
To be announced?
Indeed. And one other thing there too, Eugene, on that response I saw back from the audit. Uh, she asked about the differential there in that account. And it was related to Randys and to the taxes, wasn't that one?
No. It's. This is a completely separate issue. It's kind of something that is no longer applicable.
Okay, it's it's null and void now, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
Agreement deduction.
Oh.
Yeah, it's all straightened out.
Well, that's why I went to announce, null and void.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, well, the agreement's expired.
Okay, it was a misunderstanding there.
Okay. House of Finance, thank George. Water and Sewer, Mr. Nemec.
Yeah, all I would say, I had no report, but I will say is that just for clarification, for those that don't know, the sewer. Fund is an enterprise fund that is completely on its own. So the. The residents that are on sewer. Are the only residents paying for that pumping and the tanks. And such. So I would ask maybe that Eugene. For the next meeting could just give us a clarification of where the sewer funds are, what's been spent, what it looks like. So. Um, and if maybe Kyle, the next meeting, next month, could give us a little. Briefing about what the sewer system involves, because it's a complex system. And I believe Steve. I don't think we're on the, that's way before our time on the board, but I believe that was part of the whole. Uh, federal EPA grant for the whole thing is that that would be owned and maintained by the village because of the pressurized system, because it's a unique system. So. That's all I have. Lester's questions.
Any questions for Joe?
Eugene, would you be, I can't see Eugene. Would Dennis, you normally you're not or something. Would you be able to put something, just a brief little thing together for the next uh next month's meeting, first meeting?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, anything else, Joe?
That is all.
All right, thank you, Joe. Police and Public Safety, Mr. Deatley.
Uh, yeah, just a couple of quick uh good news things. Um, I want to thank Chief Parma. We did get some information this last week that. We got a grant for twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars for the in-car video. Uh, that will be going in. So we appreciate the chief's work on that and that's a big help uh for the village and the department. Um, he also got a grant for twenty-one hundred dollars for bulletproof vests. Um, so another uh, you know. Kudos to the chief and thank him for his work because I know there's a lot of work that goes into these grant uh proposals and applications. So uh, thank you, chief, for your work on that. Do you have anything to add, chief?
Um. No, I did get information that they're supposed to ship our uh our traffic monitoring device. Uh, we should have it hopefully middle of this week, if if not sooner. Um, so once we get that in in the building, we can figure out, first got to figure out how to use it. And then uh we'll start getting it deployed and, you know, have it be part of our uh hopefully our our hope traffic program moving forward. So I'm I'm excited to get started with that.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Steve. Thank you, chief. Uh, I see in your memo, chief, that you said it's uh. Be the fourth of October. That was quick.
Yes, much quicker than I thought it was gonna come.
That's good. Get to use it while the weather's still.
Yep, yeah, it'd be nice to get it out there, get some good data.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Okay, uh, Building and Environment, Mr. Thorne.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mark. Building and Zoning, Mr. Prano.
Uh, I just have a question for Kyle. Kyle, there's a, there's a tree, there's a dead tree on Stevens Court. Uh, it's in the one of the. Um, it's past my house. It's probably down between five twenty-six and. Five thirty-five or so. Can you guys take a look at that? Um, it's leaning over pretty badly. It's been dead for ten minutes. I don't know if it can be trimmed or if it has to be cut down, but. The risk is that it falls onto. That part of the road.
Yeah, we can take a look at it. It's you, you pretty certain it's our tree?
I I I, that's an excellent question. I do not know that. I know it's on the grass uh. Circle, you know, that's in that splits. You know, the street as you go down, we have two areas.
Oh, okay, yeah, I I know where you're talking. I'll I'll take a look at it tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, that's all I had, Mr. President.
Okay, thank you, Anthony. Uh, old business. We've got uh ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven. Have a motion to so approve.
Oh. Make the motion to approve. Twenty twenty-two eleven? Sorry.
Moved by Hoffman, seconded by Thorne to approve ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven and ordinance amending the. Regulations governing registration motor vehicles. And trailers within the village of Sleepy Hollow. Okay.
Two, two things.
Yes, Joe.
After that whole comment, and I agree a hundred percent with the discussion about money. Uh, I'm not, I'm actually not in favor of giving an increased discount to seniors and I would actually. Uh, almost see that we just do away with that and simplify the process. So certainly. Anybody living in Sleepy Hollow kind of for the. Was it ten dollars a year? I'm going to Starbucks one time, so. I'm not in favor of that, so just saying.
Okay.
Actually, I'd make a motion to delete paragraph F to delete the uh senior discount.
I was gonna say, this was a great two hours. What the the only thing that was changed in this, Joe, is the uh military discount.
Right, so.
Uh, it's underlined, so I believe that's new to the code, isn't it, Attorney Schuster?
Mr. Nemec, uh, there were, uh, this change was voted on uh. Earlier in the year, but not committed to an ordinance. For the senior discount. And then the the cross out is the newest discussion, which was. To delete the active military duty uh discount. And the third change on the page three, paragraph four, is another change that was made earlier this year by vote of the board. So uh, uh, when the uh, when you made the suggestion about the active duty. Uh, I then consulted with uh Mr. Van and we determined that these other. Items, although they had been considered by and voted on by the board and not been codified. So this ordinance uh picks up all three of those proposed changes.
So we could vote, so if somebody seconded, we could have a discussion on that at this time.
Correct, it it. That's correct.
We've got a motion on. Was moved and seconded.
Then a motion to amend.
You want a motion to amend? And you want to motion to amend what?
To remove uh.
Remove.
I guess that. Go ahead, Attorney Schuster.
Uh, paragraph G.
Paragraph F, I believe.
Yeah.
F.
So that would delete a discount. That's allowed to persons over sixty-five years of age. At twenty-five percent for up to two vehicles each year.
That is correct.
Uh, I'll I'll second it for the opportunity to have discussion.
Okay, moved by Nemec, seconded by. Prano to amend ordinance twenty twenty-two dash eleven. By striking paragraph eleven. Or paragraph F? Any further comments, questions or discussion?
Joe, do you want to uh? Give your thoughts again?
Uh, the same thing I said before, it's just that. We're scraping for every nickel we can get, I believe, and. President Pickett can speak to this. I believe all this money goes to. Road repairs and it's not. Not much, but I believe that. Every resident, even the senior citizens will be willing to contribute another ten or twenty dollars a year to getting as many potholes repaired as possible.
So so one, one of the things that has come up recently and if if we recall, when this was brought up. Uh, we had ten percent for as many cars as you had. And then we changed it to. Uh, twenty-five percent. Uh, for up to two cars. So. When you look at the dollar difference. If it was ten percent, let's say for four cars. That would be um forty dollars. Right? Uh, if it's twenty-five uh. Yeah, sixteen dollars, I'm sorry, sixteen dollars. If you look. If you look at, uh, twenty-five percent for one, so twenty-five percent of forty is, uh, at ten, if you have two cars, that's twenty. Right?
Right.
And the other way, it was gonna be, if you had four cars, you'd have, you'd have sixteen. So what we've actually done in this power F F, when we had the discussion some months ago, we actually increased the discount for people who have those cars. If we kept it at ten percent, it, it, it would be what it is today, you know. So uh, Mr. Nemec and I had a brief conversation today regarding this, and we thought that it was worth bringing up again just for clarification as to the twenty-five percent they give. And.
I mean, I would second all the comments that Trustee Hoffman has made tonight about looking at our finances, looking at the numbers, and if this fills in one or two more potholes, it certainly is a step in the right direction for the village.
The other question, the money from the stickers, is that only allocated?
awarded to roads and police.
Right. Good, George, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Do we even know what the percentage of those over sixty-five is in the village? I mean, if we got three thousand homes.
We got a thousand.
I mean, thousand homes.
Our population, if you looked at the twenty-twenty census, uh, those over sixty-five, I believe, were about thirty-five percent. Roughly a quarter of the village.
So a thousand. For three hundred homes, three hundred, three hundred fifty homes.
Two cars go a home? Or one point, one point five cars go a home? To figure it out at that times, what, forty? Or not forty, uh?
These three thousand dollars.
What's that?
It'd be, we'd be picking up three thousand dollars. But then there's also, you know, the goodwill factor, and how much just goodwill work. How many potholes can you solve with two thousand dollars, or how much goodwill you generate by having such a discount?
Jeff, how many potholes can we fill in for, uh, three thousand dollars?
I get the art funds.
Um, I'd say average cost of a pothole is, it's about, let's say, average eighty dollars a square yard. Um, each pothole is maybe on a conservative basis, maybe ten square yards. So I mean, you're looking at eight hundred bucks a patch, maybe? Give or take?
Maybe three or four patches.
The four patches is the most, if that.
All I know is that, you know, and I would say by elderly, uh, see people that are in this category, if I'm at the Jewel or other places, that's one of the things that gets mentioned a lot. So that's all I'm saying, I, this, which is more goodwill, people being upset that they're hitting potholes or that they're getting an extra Starbucks?
That's the question. Potholes or Starbucks? We don't know Starbucks, that's where you all own Starbucks. No further comments, questions, or discussion? Roll call, please, on the amendment.
And what, what are we, we're voting on?
We're voting on the amendment.
So.
The amendment was to strike section F. So on the amendment, roll call, please. Mr. Perrino. What do they, uh?
No.
Potholes or Starbucks?
Mr. Clerk, you rotate the, the.
Yes, I do. Yes, I do, and that was the lack of the draw. Precious.
So it's the, to vote to strike the, strike the paragraph F?
Correct.
If we strike it, do we have an opportunity to change anything?
Well, I don't have another amendment to change anything.
I do one, I gotta do one at a time.
Right.
So we strike it right now, if we, both, what's? Explain what happens, okay?
We remove it from the motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash one.
But then we have to back and revisit it.
No.
No?
Yeah, we revisit, you revisit what's left, or left on it, of twenty-two dash eleven, which is the rest of the ordinance minus F.
Okay, so minus, you take this one out. It, there's no longer a senior discount.
Right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out.
I'm gonna vote to, uh, to strike it. So yes.
You're in favor of the amendment to strike?
Yes.
Mr. Deatley?
Yes.
Mr. Thor?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
No.
Mr. Nemec?
Yes.
Four to one, motion so carries, section F is struck from the ordinance. So that leaves us the main motion.
So.
Which is twenty-two, twenty-two dash eleven minus.
So can I make a motion to table this till the next meeting?
You can make a motion to postpone it to the next meeting. If you wish to table it, tabling has no date to bring it back.
If I make a motion to have it to the next meeting, we could come up with additional wording that we could add to this at that time?
Are you asking to make an amendment to the?
Yeah.
Motion?
He may make an amendment if, at the next meeting.
At the next meeting.
If it's postponed.
Okay, so then I would, I would like to make a motion to
postpone.
Postpone this to the next meeting. Or I would make a motion to change something, you think?
We're gonna go to Caribou instead of Starbucks?
Yeah.
Okay.
My motion is to.
To postpone until October seventeen.
Correct. Second, Deatley.
Moved by Perrino, seconded by Deatley to postpone ordinance twenty-two dash eleven until October seventeen. And there's no discussion on that, is there? It's a postponed, yes. Uh, it could be debated.
Yep.
Then it could be amended. All right. No further comments, questions, or discussion. Roll call, please. Mr. Nemec?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Mr. Thor?
Aye.
Mr. Deatley?
Aye.
Mr. Perrino?
Aye.
Five affirmative votes, no negative votes. The motion to approve ordinance twenty-two dash eleven has been postponed until October seventh.
Mr. President?
Yes, Joe.
I just want to bring up, since we're postponing this, this might be something for consideration for the next meeting, and it would be homework for Chief Parma and for Eugene, and possibly for, uh, Trustee Perrino. As you remember, the trailer uh, stickers was a new thing also suggested by Chief Lanain to aid the code enforcement officer in their policing, or shouldn't say policing of, um, enforcing trailers and snowmobiles. Uh, and I believe the wording at the time is that they would only, only, uh, Mark was, I'm wrong in this, it was permitted trailers, is what the trailer fee would be. So that would be only for um, boat trailers, uh, that are in the length of a correct length, and snowmobile trailers that were the correct length and such. Um, and there was all supposed to be a database so that, uh, the code enforcement officer could go out and saw a boat in the driveway, since he's not allowed to go on the property or measure. If he saw a boat that was too large, he could just cite him for lack of sticker or lack of registration, and then they would not be able to register their boats, since it was too long. I would suggest that we clean up that process, or maybe the verbiage on the trailers in there, and make it a more effective process so that the code enforcement officer can actually use it, from my understanding, it's not been able to use it because of our database and the way we collect the fees for those. So it's maybe something for Eugene, since he's with the office staff and Chief Parma, since he appointed contact with the code enforcement officer to maybe change the language of trailers, or the fee for that, or how it's, how it's done, just since we're cleaning this up. Um, thoughts?
Well, that, that can be part of the meeting that's supposed to be had with the code enforcement officer.
I was gonna say, let's move that to the, uh, October seventeenth, uh, new business with code enforcement.
Right, but I just thought that that would be an opportunity, since they're having that meeting, for the three of those people to get together and figure out how they want to do this, because it doesn't seem like the way we're doing it now is, is working for a intended purpose.
Right. Okay, we'll find out on the seventeenth.
We'll find out when Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Perrino and Chief Parma meet with Mr. Flutner.
Yep. Which should be before the seventeenth.
Should be.
Yes, I, I will spearhead the date.
Okay.
Everybody together on it.
All right. Uh, okay, that's it for twenty-two dash eleven. Uh, we've still got to discuss the vehicle registration late fee charges?
Probably should have been agreed in when the ordinance was put out. Probably like that.
So the ordinance has succeeded then?
Yeah.
All right. Okay, any other old business come before the board? One of the old business come before the board? New business? Okay, new business. We've got the Building Department and the Board of Appeals.
Now, Mr. President, there's, uh, property owner on Glen Oak Drive, who's, uh, had an issue with the swimming pool and has, um, discussed that and, and gone through different, uh, discussions with the building official. There's a court case pending, uh, regarding the item, because it had not been resolved, and, and as a result of all that, the, uh, property owner, Mr. Lindeman, has filed an appeal with the village clerk, an appeal from the determinations made by the building official, who's also present this evening to discuss, or to present, uh, her side of the story, so to speak. Um, you've adopted rules of procedure for this event. Um, and, uh, those would call for Mr. Lindeman to make a, uh, presentation, an argument based on the documents that are in the meeting package, and then the building official uh, to respond, uh, based on her, uh, July twelve, twenty-twenty-two letter addressed to Mr. Lindeman and making determinations about his, uh, situation.
Okay.
So I believe Mr. Lindeman is present?
I am.
Do you have the rules?
Uh, got the rules? Okay, we've had the opening remarks. On in the initial presentation by the applicant. That's you, Mr. Lindeman?
That would be me. Okay, um, I've been before the board previously at a meeting talking about this. Um, my position really hasn't changed, it's just I'm trying to find the formal way to address my concerns and the ordinances that are currently in place for residents to have a pool in their backyard. I live off of Glen Oak Drive. My lot is a very sloped lot. We have a septic field versus just the traditional septic tank. Currently, the ordinances that are put in place dictate the distance the pool needs to be away from the, the home itself. The state of Illinois, the, the, the regulation that I saw in the state of Illinois, it's ten foot distance from any permanent structure. The way our village ordinance or the ordinance that's in place right now that I've been addressed with is fifteen feet. I believe right now I'm approximately fourteen feet away from my house with my pool. Um, so that is one segment of my appeal, if you will. The other part is being on a hillside lot, it's very difficult for me to structure any kind of permanent fencing around this. In addition to having a septic field where nothing is to be anywhere closer, right now, the ordinance says twenty-five feet from your septic field, or any junction box, I believe it is. If that is, there's no way I could have any form of pool in my house, at my house, with those kind of stipulations in place. Right now, I can say my pool is fifteen feet from the tanks and any segment of my septic field. And again, for the most part, is it's an above-ground pool. And although it is a ten-thousand gallon pool, it's a twenty-foot diameter pool. It's considered a Class C pool, which is permanent, but it's intact. It's a, it is a collapsible pool and something that could be removed in the event anything needed to be done of any great detail. The, probably the biggest sticking point right now is the fence, because if I put up a permanent structure fence, I'd have to dig in fittings for every fence pole, again, which would make it impossible with a septic field in my backyard. The proposal for my appeal is to put what you see in many places, yeah, I mean, as close to St. Charles, we see that it's a, it's an approved type of fencing, you see it all in Amazon, and most pools are advertised with this kind of fencing structure that attaches to the pool itself. It's a two-foot structure that attaches to east post. It's compliant with this, with as much as how far the distance between each fence pole is. It's a, and it would be secured with a, a self-blocking gate staircase that would go into the pool. So would meet all the code for safety, the, right now, the fence needs to be four foot tall according to our ordinance. The pool itself is forty-eight or fifty-two inches tall on the back end, where it's at the bottom of the hill, so it's a ve, it's a very, that alone is higher than four feet. The fence would be two feet higher than that. And as it goes around where it's dug into my yard somewhat, it would still exceed the four feet requirements that's in place by the ordinance. The only thing it's lacking, according to our ordinance, you have to have a three-foot walkway around the pool. You don't have that with this, but you have access to the pool with the landing on top of the staircase that is included in the minutes, I believe. Everybody has a copy of that. So it adds just as much security, doesn't prevent any safety from the pool, um. And that, and I think that pretty much addresses all my concerns and the appeal that I have.
Okay, any questions, uh, on the board to Mr. Lindeman?
Yeah, one for me, the, the fence, when it comes up the side of the pool, and you said it doesn't have the three foot, is there, is there space between there from the fence to the pool edge, or is it right on the pool edge?
It's right on the pool. So, but again, like, if you take a look at the picture in there that I provided, you know, it's, it's what the, the safety of a fence for a pool is to prevent people from getting into the pool, you know, small kids, junk kids from getting into the pool and, and grounding. This would more than accomplish that.
Okay, thank you.
Question about our codes?
Joe?
Didn't we just modify our whole water and sewer to be compliant with the, or be similar to the county codes and not have that twenty-five foot setback from septic fields, or is this something different?
Well, Ms. Detmer will be talking with you in a moment, and this sounds like a question that should be directed to her. Is that a fair statement, Mr. Nemec?
Uh, I, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just questioning that, so this kind of goes in, I'd like to have an answer now, so that I understand more about what the resident is asking, and some of his other issues, so.
This is a time to ask questions of Mr. Lindeman. If any.
No, Mr. Lindeman, at the time, the pool is what, how long though was the pool installed?
Just as the summer post went after COVID hit. I and I will pay full responsibility, and I have paid fines in this regard with regards to not securing a permit for an above-ground pool, because I did not do my due diligence prior to putting an above-ground pool in my backyard. So that is a hundred percent on me.
Any other questions from Mr. Lindeman? There's been none more. Responsibility official?
Stand up, or may I sit?
You, I don't, fair enough, stand right? You don't stand?
I'm gonna let him pass. Mr. Lindeman, um, received a fence permit back in twenty twenty-one, um, after much conversation, uh, with, um, Lonnie, uh, Lindeman. Uh, they didn't want. Uh, they didn't want to do the same type of normal fence that you would see on a swimming pool. Um, so when they were issued that permit, they were instructed that it had to be permitted. They took it down last fall and that's where the issue seemed to be. They did receive a tax permit and a school permit, but did not offer their inspection, so I was unaware of the situation at the time. Subsequently, they did receive the letter that is in your packet. Going with what. Was just asked about the the ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash eight with regard to the septic system. Fence, uh, components were put in there specifically, uh, in a reduced amount, all of the other requirements. Are exactly as required by the state of Illinois. And so with regards to any septic components, we can't change that, the only part was the. The part with the fence and that situation, uh, to try and work with citizens, but we had heard comments back from previously. When I was out for a deck modification inspection, um, I did run a tape. Um, and at grade, which is what I just sent out. The top of the fence, top of the pool is actually only about twenty-three inches above grade. The challenge, they also had, as Mr. Lindeman said, their land is very, very sloped. And. Being twenty-four inch fence on top of that isn't wanting to protect the forty-eight inch. Um, that's required at grade, and the challenge is that their grade rises. So when you're. Say eighteen inches away. The grade's even higher than where I measured straight across from the top of the pool. So theoretically. Fence he proposes still would not meet the forty-eight inch requirement. And he is absolutely correct. The village of Sleepy Hollow is unique in the requirement of three foot walkway around, which presumably. When it was written in the seventies was allow for maintenance of the pool is the only thing I can actually think of, but they can't find any documentation for that. And. In the appendix, the word, the two thousand three international event proposal shouldn't, and this was not adopted by the. This type of. Installation would be accessible if it met the minimum of forty-eight inches. So I don't know, quite frankly, because I have looked online to see if there are taller ones. Um. But unless it can meet the forty-eight inch, uh, when installed, then we're back to square one, we're not protected. Providing minimum level of safety that's required by the international code.
Yeah.
Address that, no, I'm sorry, not yet, okay, that, I, I don't. The answer's yes, but not yet.
Can I ask Barbara a question?
Go for it.
Are you finished?
Yeah, Barbara.
Yeah.
Right, okay. I guess, but um, you you're saying twenty-three inches, uh, it's not, it's off grade, below grade. Now, the pool's fifty-two.
Right.
And it's got this two foot high fence, so it gives it a total of seventy-four inches total height. Yes, I'm. But.
Sorry, I had a bit of.
But is there anywhere, if you walk the pool, anywhere, you know, in the diameter of the pool? That it's lower than forty-eight inches, so you're saying in the front, the one area? Even with the pool itself, it's set that far in the ground that it doesn't meet the forty-eight inches?
Correct, it's only twenty-three inches above grade. Next to. Sorry. They have the deck and then they have their. Their land slopes down towards the pool and they've dug the pool in. So at this point, if this is grade, their pool is only about twenty-three inches above. The grass.
So the fence is twenty-four, so you're looking at forty-seven inches.
Right.
So we're one inch tall.
Yeah. Give or take, and yeah, and it wasn't, I mean, I didn't.
But in reality, if I went out there, measured or you measured, it could be forty-eight.
It depends, and if you look at grade, it's supposed to be forty-eight inches above grade, and the concern is, is with the grade raising. Or rising, excuse me, and the fence is here. When you go out. Basically, up the hill about a foot and a half to two feet. It's actually probably only sixteen inches. So that's the challenge. It's a, it's a unique lot, which.
The, the what I know, uh, Joe, you had a question, you want to ask yours next?
Is a septic field setback a question or not, or has that been resolved?
I haven't ever been able to measure it against the septic, yeah, this. The, it's supposed to be twenty-five feet from the septic tank per the state law, which was incorporated into the village ordinance.
Uh, thank you.
Um. Is the. Changes that he's recommending or that he's asking for here, um, when all said and done, is that? Produce safety on a par with doing everything to code? You know what I mean?
Or, sorry, I'm. That the proposed changes for when we go to the codes or for what he wants, I'm sorry.
What we're looking at here.
If and only if the fence meets the forty-eight inches. Above grade when installed, will it meet code? Remember, the code is a minimum.
But the fence, is the fence the main thing, is that the only thing, the the walkway around it, we're not, we're not pushing it there or not?
That wasn't really part of the question, by your code in in Title seven, chapter four, the swimming pool. Any pool requires a three foot clear walkway around the pool and then encompassed by a forty-eight inch high fence. So that's what your current municipal code is. And that's the unique thing.
There is no three foot walkway around this pool.
Hmm, not really.
Question, is that our code or is that the international building code for pools, the three foot walkway or both?
That is purely Title seven, chapter four, the village of Sleepy Hollow Municipal Code, has nothing to do with international codes.
Okay, so I understand we've not adopted it yet, if we were to a- adopt the latest international building codes. What part of this pool would not meet code?
The forty-eight inch barrier at grade.
And have you and the resident worked on a way to resolve that to make it forty-eight inches, is there a way to do it?
Well, the initial fence that they were granted a a permit for was forty-eight inches, according to the specs that were provided. If this addition that they wish to put on top of their pool, if it's, if it's. Designed to accept that, uh, fence, yeah, and it meets the forty-eight inch, then it would technically be in. Compliance with future adopted code. But it has to be the minimum of forty-eight. Because even if it, if it were not due to new adoption, it still have to have a separate forty-eight inch fence.
And have, is the resident willing to do that?
We'll get back to him in a moment.
Just when I, I was asking if that had been discussed at all with the the building inspector of the.
Yes.
That discussion had been had and if.
Um, I have another question.
Mr. Governor, the question is to you, has the resident discussed with you installing a four foot high fence?
Well, he had a permit to install a forty-eight inch high fence in twenty twenty-one. Which he subsequently took down after it was installed. There has been no further discussion about any of this until this appeal came in.
Do you have, do you have that, Joe?
Yes.
All right.
Anthony?
Um. Where where the twenty-three inch, uh, issue is now. Uh, the pool's a circular, I'm assuming, right? And that area is against. Uh, the deck is coming off the house, right?
And then there's, there's a small grass area.
Right, so, so that portion, so that circular pool, where that's an issue. How much of that diameter is in this twenty-three inch? Is it, you know, you have, you know, if you have a circle, right, yeah.
I did measure it.
Okay, um, it, that part of the pool faces the back of the house.
Correct.
And are, is there any, um, are there any residences behind this property? Are there any, does the property back up to?
That's the, uh, that's the.
It's green space.
Thank you.
Okay.
I wasn't sure if it was part of the, uh, first inch.
It's actually green space.
Okay.
Nice, that's.
But is it my understanding, though, you were saying that your measurement is forty-seven inches?
No, sir, it's twenty-three inches.
Yeah, you said, you said earlier. If you add that, it comes up to forty-seven.
If, if it had the twenty-four inch big there.
If it has the twenty-four inch there, it would be forty-seven.
Yes, sir.
I mean, personally, I don't. I'm sorry, I don't see the difference between forty-seven and a forty-eight, I know it's one inch, but. It's if you measure from the bottom of the dirt or you measure from the top of the grass, I mean, I think you're splitting hairs on that. So.
Any other questions from Mr. Detmer? Not. Then the next one. Uh, and actions by the board?
Well, Mr. Lindeman. To, to respond to.
Okay. First one was with the forty-seven inches, there is, there is a allowable gap between the pool. And the actual fencing structure itself, it's not sitting right on top of the pool. That's going to add some length, but plus, I will ensure that if. We are exceeding the forty or not hitting that forty-eight inches. It'll be very easily fixable by reducing the grade of my yard by. Repurposing or moving out some of that ground and that dirt without inhibiting anything else, so. I will very much ensure that that forty-eight, a minimum of forty-eight inches will be around the entire pool. Just to touch base on that fencing that was permitted prior. It was a temporary fence because we can't put in a permanent fence and it wasn't necessarily removed by me, it was blown down because. Anybody that lives on Glen Oak with, that backs up to the fire station and all this right back here. That is a wind tunnel that whips fiercely, so. A temporary structure is not a, it's not to code for one, and it's not a suitable fix because of it continued to roll down, no matter how many. Hands I repaired the post, so. But I would most assuredly ensure that there would be a forty-eight inch. At minimum, sorry.
That's a, I have a follow-up question for. The resident, is that?
Yes.
Uh, is the pool, uh, something you intend to keep up year round or would you?
I really might too.
Well, I guess.
It's currently winter, I.
Okay, so it is a structure that your, that your goal is to leave up all year round.
Correct.
And for years.
To come.
Until it disintegrates on its own.
Exactly. And if I replace it, I promise I'll get a permit. Okay.
Present it, all right, thank you, Mr. Lindeman. Uh, now we're back to the actions of the board. You've got a half dozen actions that you can take into consideration this evening, gentlemen. You can continue this hearing during another date for further consideration or presentations. We can deliberate. On the arguments and summations as presented this evening. We can postpone such deliberations until a later date. We can conclude the deliberations and make a final decision. We can make or direct the village attorney to prepare the written findings, which is based upon the deliberations and decisions, which we haven't gotten to. Uh, the other three, or the other two also, uh, deal with. Taking care of, uh, the written facts and findings. Or the last one is we can take such other action as we may gain advising. So what is your pleasure this evening, you want to continue deliberations? Come to a conclusion this evening, if you want to put this on the calendar for a later date.
I, I would prefer that we. Uh. Make the final decision this evening. Um, if there's additional deliberation that we need to take. As opposed to postponing it due to the fact that it's already the first of October. And if there would be any. Ground movement or changes to allow. Uh, for the ultimate height. By that would. Be best done prior to. The later time coming.
Mr. President?
Yes, Joe.
Can I suggest that, uh. Since, I don't believe any of this discussion is going to involve Mr. Steele or Mr. Kalender, that they be allowed to leave the meetings, because I know. Mr. Kalender has to get up early in the morning and do important public service work.
What was that?
Oh, Mr. Kalender. Kalender can be excused, sure, gentlemen. Hey. I don't think we need you at this point, if we do, we'll call you. So if you'd like to stay, you may stay. Or even go to Starbucks.
One additional comment, I believe that if if there was a flitter of the board. Return to an executive session to have these deliberations. If you wanted to do that, I'm not saying you need to or you should, you must, you simply may, but, um. Um, Parino has suggested that he'd like, you know, like to proceed to a decision this evening, so.
We, uh. Want to go to executive session, if so, I take a motion.
Yeah, I, I, I personally think you need to go to executive session on this, but that's just my opinion.
Yeah, well, it needs a motion and a vote.
Right.
There is no such motion, uh, uh, this goes it now.
Okay, so my thought would be that if. If, um, there's an agreement from the resident that. That the, what that, when the twenty-four inch tight fence is erected, that the. As, as it was proposed at the end here, that the ground is as, uh, lowered to. Comply with a forty-eight inch height, I think that would be one requirement. And then is there, uh, another option where there could be a fence that's. Maybe they make a fence that's thirty inches high and could a thirty inch high fence be, be better suited, which would eliminate any. You know, digging out of dirt around the pool. But if, but in my, my thought is that if the. If the, if the requirement. You know, the, the, I guess, the, the main thing that we kind of talked about it is that safety is the most important thing. Uh, in, 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 in our world, fences prevent folks from doing. Stupid things, they don't prevent people from doing all things, but it becomes the deterrent. So if we can, you know, uh, confirm that there will, would be a structure to prevent. Something stupid from happening, and it has to meet the forty-eight inch requirement, then I would. Be in favor of letting this proceed with inspections and so forth, once. That work is completed and that there's a timeframe for the work to be completed. You know, ten days. That's my.
Question for trustee Parino?
Sir, how, Joe?
I- is it our intent to adopt the new latest building codes and to amend our swimming pool ordinances to? Just adopt the international code on those?
I, I think that's a plan that, that, uh, I've, that Ms. Detmer is planning to do, I don't think that's something that. I, I, that's something that would happen, but I don't think it's something that has to happen for this particular situation to be, uh. Ended or or to be decided upon.
Okay, I just want, but our, that is our intent to go that way, and so some of these issues would not. Like the three foot walkway is, is just our code and we're going to probably try and do away with that at some point in the future, as I see. Okay, thank you, so.
So what, what other issues go away when we update the codes?
Well.
For here, what we're talking about, so the, through the, the walkway all around, what else?
What, uh, a separate fence. This type of fence that Mr. Lindeman is proposing will be totally acceptable. As long, as long as it meets forty-eight inch height. As long, as long as it meets forty-eight inch high requirement, and that there's no more. That a four-inch steer cannot pass below the framing member and the top of the pool. They don't want, like, a, a small child to get caught underneath there, that it's the same with any, um, railing system, uh, stair kind of thing. So.
Okay.
I think with the information that Mr. Lindeman's provided us, um, and as we said, we all know Sleepy Hollow is very unique, as far as every lot is unique. Um, you know, I feel we want to try to work with the residents to make this happen. Safety isn't always an issue, and as Anthony suggested, you know, no fence is going to ever. It, it stops some things, it'll never stop everything. Um, I understand that totally, um, but I feel, you know, if you're hitting that forty-seven, forty-eight inch mark. Um, and, uh, if we're looking at changing this, into this other codes, it looks like that, uh. You know, would be okay, I would be, uh, okay with allowing this to move forward with those caveats.
I mean, I see a path forward where he can be in compliance, right?
Right.
And along with the septic requirements, which I quite wasn't aware of. So.
Can't do that. Yeah.
Albert, does that set a precedent, or Mark, does that set a precedent if we. That, that's my only, because it's a septic one, does that set a precedent for something else in the future? If we say, okay.
I'd say, um. I mean, if you have a septic issue, you're going to have to tear it up anyhow to fix it, so I would think.
Right.
You know, we're fine there, because this was, you'd rather have water there than, uh, the water coming out of the septic, so. Uh, I wouldn't think that would be an issue.
I'm, I'm not sure, uh, what to imagine, uh, something, what else would.
I don't know, you brought it up, you educated me on that a while back, and now, uh, you know, don't set a precedent, and somebody comes in, says you did it for this person, what about me? You know, so, I just want to make sure, I mean, I agree, what he's done, I'm very familiar with those fences he's putting up, and that's as safe as. You're going to get for a pool, but, uh, you know, the other is, I just want to make sure we're not setting any precedence. Going forward, that somebody can come back and it can back to bite us, that's all.
There's really no other obstruction kind of. Structure that's allowed in the yard, can't have a shed. Can't have a gazebo.
But is it fifteen feet from the deck, or fifteen feet from the, uh, I mean, the, well, the septic, it's fifteen, that's right, fifteen feet from the septic system, it should be twenty-five.
From the.
It is fifteen.
From the tank.
Maybe, it's been, we're currently, it's fourteen feet, the ordinance is fifteen, the, from the house. I have my pool is fourteen feet, and again, it's partly due to just the slope of my yard. The septic. There's no way, there's no way without me putting it in my front yard, that I could be twenty-five feet away from my septic or my field. So I, it's just not. My yard is set up to where it wouldn't be possible, but. Although a Class C is considered, according to what we were able to find, a Class C is considered, because it's over ten thousand, or it's over. So many gallons, fifteen hundred gallons, it is still. Didn't be collapsed, if necessary.
And it is a pool, so.
And it's waters that will go downhill, because it is such a small yard, there's nothing going to be. It's nothing's going to be covered in water, because all the water would run downhill. I'm sorry.
So are we at a motion state?
We're, I'm not hearing anybody else want the floor for discussion or deliberation. We have, you know, we've got to come up with some action.
So I would make a motion that the. Board of Appeals, as we are now acting as. Uh, of the group on the. Um, recommendations that. The resident has proposed. Uh. Pending inspection by. The building department. And that. There is, uh, that, that set timeframe is, uh. Placed on the. Uh, fence, uh, setting up, erecting the fence.
What, what would be a reasonable time?
Fourteen days, twenty-one days.
Well, I, I think that I would say, um. Well, I, I, I'll, I'll strike the time limit, I, I think that the, the, uh, underlying point I'm making is that. If, if there's. Quick cooperation between the building department and the resident to get this thing taken forward. Then that's, that's what we'd like to see, but as opposed.
End of October?
Yeah, I'm looking.
Reasonable for the work that we're talking about?
Have to ask the homeowner a question, Austin, can you get it?
That's what I have to check. I don't know if any of these pieces, I, because it's, it's fairly expensive.
Right.
Um, and before I place the order, I wanted to see where we ended up tonight. Um, I believe I should be able to get it and have it up by the end of October.
Well.
I mean, if I get a, if there's any delay, I could easily email you right away and let you know.
Okay, end of October unless otherwise agreed by the building official?
Unless due to shipping.
Okay, yeah, that's the only thing, and the fencing I know is available, the latter I, I haven't gotten that part in the ordering process.
The reason I was bringing up a date is, is. Again, the whole point of this thing is the safety thing, I don't want this to go until next February or April or May.
Yeah.
Um, otherwise, you know, whatever, be empty, then we set up next year, and then whatever.
I'm just figuring, you know, construction time too, and that, that incoming box, and you can just put it there, there's.
So with a reasonable rate of, reasonable date of the end of October.
Thirty days?
Yeah, thirty days, and then if there's issue.
Unless there's other good cause shown, you have problems ordering.
Yeah.
I love that, yeah. I would say.
Yeah.
Give it to me, because I just.
I basically called first.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Anthony Pareno. Who.
Allow.
To accept the, the, say, the, uh, the plans submitted by Mr. Lindeman. Uh, pending inspections and compliance with the minimum height requirement. Work to be done within thirty days, uh, unless, uh, otherwise agreed by the building official for good cause shown.
Moved by Pareno, taken by Anthony, if you want to get a job to it. Any further comments, questions, or discussion? Mbein Nutt, roll call please. Mr. Decker.
Hi.
Mr. Hoffman.
Hi.
Mr. Nimitz. Joe. How do you vote?
Hi.
Mr. Thor.
Hi.
Mr. Pareno. How do you vote, sir?
Hi. I'm doing a radio on you, looking at my other receiver.
All right, we go to the rookie.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine. No negative votes, motion so passes, thank you, gentlemen. Anything else this evening?
Uh, just from a procedural thing, did we have to go into a different meeting as a zoning board of appeals?
Not, not where we are the board.
Okay.
It, it, it was listed as an agenda item, uh, board of appeals, so in effect, that's what you do.
Okay.
Further, I move adjourned.
Second.
Moving second, uh, roll call. Mr. Pareno.
Hi.
Mr. Natalie.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
No negative votes, motion so passes, we are adjourned, we will see you seven thirty, October seventeenth.
Like it or not.
Gentlemen, I want to thank you all.
You don't need to appear. Okay, my office, my office is. So I continue the cases in December.
I would say. Far, we'll send, what time, I'm running.
Thank you. Did we say something else?